Session. Hope that sounded like my microphone came on. There we go.
Convene out of closed session. And first step is, we've had two closed session meetings. We started earlier today, one for the San Diego Water District, and then another for the City Council. So I'll let the city attorney report out on the San Diego Water District closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to close out the San Diego Water District closed session. All Board of Directors members were present in closed session on the one item on the closed session agenda. While in closed session, the Board of Directors took no reportable action on the one item on closed session calendar. And that concludes the San Diego Water District closed session special agenda.
Okay, and I'll report out on the City Council. We had two items, and there were no actions taken, no reportable actions taken out of either of the items. And with that, we will adjourn the closed session. And now we're ready to, see, I'm going to find all my paperwork here. There we go. Okay, and with that, I will call to order the, oh, we have to wait for the computers. Switching gears.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
There we go. That we all, we all set? Everybody's logged in? City Clerk, you ready?
Yes, we're ready.
We're ready. Okay, with that, I will call this meeting to order. This is a special joint meeting of the Encinitas City Council and Planning Commission. First step is to call the roll.
Sure.
Councilmember San Antonio?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lyons?
Here.
Mayor Ayers?
Here.
And then on to Planning Commission, Chair Dalton, Vice Chair Ryan, Commissioner Prendergast, Commissioner Sherrod, and Commissioner Whitaker. The record will show that all members of the Planning Commission and City Council are present tonight.
Okay, thank you. And today is a joint community workshop on, with the City Council and Planning Commission to review and receive feedback on draft implementing ordinances for AB 2011, SB 6, and AB 2243, and then also look at amendments of the downtown Encinitas, downtown Encinitas specific plan and the North 101 corridor specific plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff for staff report.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Codona, Senior Planner with the City of Encinitas and Project Manager for this work effort. At tonight's workshop, we will be discussing AB 2011 and SB 6 implementing ordinance and objective design standards for the downtown Encinitas and North 101 corridor specific plans. So let's get started with some introductions. So from the city, we have myself, Sarah Codona, and next to me, I have Patty Anders, Planning Manager, Megan Openshaw, Assistant Director with Development Services, Scott Dropkin, Director of Development Services, and from the consultant team, we have Matt Gelbman, Senior Urban Planner with Ascent. And a quick note on Matt is that he and the Ascent team wrote the first objective design standards approved by the state and has developed toolkits to help jurisdictions across the state develop their own objective design standards. And it's also worth mentioning that Matt grew up in Encinitas and brought this local knowledge with him in creating this work product. And we decided to give Christine Babla the night off tonight. So here is the agenda for today's workshop. First, we will cover the project overview, background, and schedule. Then we will discuss the legislative bills and the ordinance. Next, we will go over the objective design standards for the downtown Encinitas and North 101 corridor specific plans. And then we will open it up for discussion to answer any questions and receive feedback. So let's jump into the project overview, background, and schedule. So here's a little background about the grant. The city applied and received an HCD grant for about $329,000 to complete this work effort, and these funds cover all the consultants' costs. The purpose of the grant is to help the city establish local procedures through an ordinance and create objective design standards to regulate projects utilizing state housing law. The qualifying criteria of the grant were that the project needed to be in a mobility hub, a transit priority area, or a low VMT area. The project shall accelerate infill development that facilitates housing supply, choice, and affordability, reduces VMT, affirmatively furthers fair housing, and the project shall conduct community engagement and outreach. The grant deadline is March 31, 2026, and recently, we received a six-month extension. These two specific plans were the only areas in the city that met the grant criteria and happened to have the highest concentration of AB 2011 and SB 6 eligible sites. These two specific plans are both dated and do not have objective design standards. The city can only administer objective design standards for development projects that utilize state housing law. And this leads us to the project overview. So the city is preparing and implementing ordinance for AB 2011 and SB 6, which allows residential development in commercial zones. In addition, the city is creating objective design standards for the downtown Encinitas and North 101 corridor specific plans, which will be applicable to all multifamily and mixed-use projects to help preserve community character within the specific plan areas. The city obtained HCD grant funding and is taking a proactive approach to establish the maximum allowed local control over multifamily and mixed-use development projects. Without an ordinance, there are no clear procedures to ensure compliance with the provisions of the state law, as they are very nuanced development standards and short review timeframes. Without objective design standards, the city has less control over buildings that are three stories or more. So let's talk a little bit about the background. In June of 2023, the City Council and Planning Commission had a joint study session to discuss AB 2011 and SB 6, which resulted in the City Council directing staff to return with an initiation to implement these bills. In August of 2023, the City Council approved an initiation for this work effort. In addition, the submission of the grant application for the Sandag HAP Cycle 2 grant funded by HCD's REEP 2.0 program. And in October of 2023, the city received the full request of $573,000 with $329,000 of those funds allocated for the AB 2011 SB 6 work effort. The HCD grant is fully covering the cost of this work effort in addition to the use of a consultant. In September of 2024, the City Council executed a professional services agreement with Ascent, and since then, the city has hosted three community workshops, which were held on April 15, July 9, and July 15 of this year. And the goal of these workshops were to provide overviews of the state laws and receive community input on important design features for the downtown Encinitas and North 101 corridor specific plan areas. So during our community outreach efforts, we received feedback to provide additional workshop advertisements, and the city heard the community's concerns and added additional advertising to the city's calendar and social media platforms. At our July workshops, we received concerns regarding the development standards allowed through these state laws and the potential impacts to the existing community character. The community's concerns were focused on height, density, parking, setbacks, open space, noise, and lighting. To address these concerns, we have incorporated objective design standards such as building setbacks when adjacent to single-family, additional upper-floor setbacks, open space, landscaping, lighting, access and parking, and service areas and utilities. In addition, the city has received positive feedback from the community regarding the city taking a proactive approach to help create the maximum allowed local control and preserve the community character of our downtown and north 101 corridor. And the goal of this evening is to receive additional feedback from the City Council, Planning Commission, and community on the draft objective design standards and what key design features and elements are important to Encinitas residents. So here is the overview of the planning process, taking a look at what we've done, where we are at now, and what is next. Following this workshop and the public review period, we will be scheduling for public hearing with the Planning Commission and then City Council. Now we will hear from Matt with Ascent.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Planning Commission. Again, I'm Matt Gelbman from Ascent, the consultant helping the city staff with this project. I'm going to provide, first, an introduction and overview to AB 2011 and SB 6. Next slide, please. As Sarah mentioned, these state laws, both AB 2011 and SB 6, allow multifamily and mixed-use residential development on commercial zones where housing was not otherwise allowed prior to the passage of these bills. The provisions of these bills would apply within the city regardless of whether the city adopts an ordinance or not. And although AB 2011 and SB 6 expand where housing can be built within Encinitas to commercial areas, there's a lot of other requirements, including complex eligibility criteria, affordability requirements, specified development standards, labor requirements, commercial tenant relocation assistance payments, and other requirements that must be met in order to be eligible for either AB 2011 or SB 6. Both of these bills expressly authorize the city to adopt and implementing ordinance to enact the provisions of the law and give some flexibility in the city to interpret that. In particular, the ordinance will clarify which zones are eligible for AB 2011 and SB 6 projects in Encinitas.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Planning Commission. Again, I'm Matt Gelbman from Ascent, the consultant helping the city staff with this project. I'm going to provide first an introduction and overview to AB 2011 and SB 6. Next slide, please. As Sarah mentioned, these state laws, both AB 2011 and SB 6, allow multifamily and mixed-use residential development on commercial zones where housing was not otherwise allowed prior to the passage of these bills. The provisions of these bills would apply within the city regardless of whether the city adopts an ordinance or not. And although AB 2011 and SB 6 expand where housing can be built within Encinitas to commercial areas, there's a lot of other requirements, including complex eligibility criteria, affordability requirements, specified development standards, labor requirements, commercial tenant relocation assistance payments, and other requirements that must be met in order to be eligible for either AB 2011 or SB 6. Both of these bills expressly authorize the city to adopt and implementing ordinance to enact the provisions of the law and give some flexibility in the city to interpret that. In particular, the ordinance will clarify which zones are eligible for AB 2011 and SB 6 projects in Encinitas. And where possible, it will ensure that R-30 overlay standards apply to AB 2011 and SB 6 projects. They're also important to note for tonight, ensure that the objective design standards apply to AB 2011 and SB 6 projects as well. Another important note is that density bonus law will still, can still be applied to AB 2011 and SB 6 projects. As defined in the bills, commercial use includes zones where office, retail, or parking are the principally permitted uses. The definition of how to interpret that is provided in state law. It's listed on the slide here as well. Next slide, please. AB 2011 and SB 6 were both amended in 2024 by the passage of AB 2243. Some of the substantive changes of this bill included allowing regional mall sites to be eligible for the provisions of AB 2011 and SB 6, which increased the site size limit from 20 acres up to 100 acres, depending on, again, specified criteria for what a regional mall is and what it includes. The changes of AB 2243 also expanded to allow sites that are within 500 feet of a freeway, which were not originally in AB 2011 and SB 6. Projects that are within 500 feet of a freeway must include specified mitigation measures as part of the project to be eligible. There are also some technical definitions related to urban use, neighborhood plan, and some clarifications related to the relationship of these bills to density bonus law as well. There are three fundamental project types created by these bills, two for AB 2011 and one project type for SB 6. They each have different development standards and requirements, but all three share in common that they allow multifamily or mixed-use development in commercial zones. The three project types include AB 2011 100% affordable, AB 2011 mixed income, and SB 6 projects. As a point of clarification, when we're talking about the AB 2011 mixed income projects, we are talking about the units having a mix of income levels as specified by state law, not to be confused with the term mixed use. All of these projects can still allow mixed use as well as multifamily residential. So it can be a little confusing in the terms there. But these three project types generally trade off between affordability requirements on the one hand and all of the other requirements that get attached to them, including streamlined approval process, the applicable development standards, and other requirements. We're going to go through all of this in a little more detail in the slides that follow. So starting with the affordable housing requirements, which are one of the defining features of each of the project types. The first one on the left of the slide, the AB 2011 100% affordable, relatively straightforward. All of the units within the project need to be dedicated to lower-income households. That includes very low or low-income households as defined by state law. SB 6 projects on the right, also relatively straightforward. They do not require affordable housing as stated in the law, but because the city has an inclusionary housing ordinance, that would be applied to SB 6 projects. AB 2011 mixed income projects are a little bit different. The law says that whichever affordability requirement is greater between the city's inclusionary housing requirements and the affordability requirement specified in state law, whichever is greater will prevail. So it can be depending on the mix of specific affordable units provided in the projects to make that determination. Each project type also has slightly different eligibility criteria. The criteria include things like site size and consider existing and surrounding uses of the site, among many other criteria. Regional malls have specific list of eligibility criteria and allow larger site sizes, as I mentioned previously. I also want to note, one unique criteria for the AB 2011 mixed income project types is that it has a frontage of 50 feet along a commercial corridor. And a commercial corridor is defined in the law as a public right-of-way with the width between 70 and 150 feet. Many of the streets within downtown Encinitas specific plan do meet this definition, including 101, which also applies within the North 101 corridor specific plan. Next slide, please. The city has developed a screening tool that's online and interactive for identifying sites that are potentially eligible for AB 2011 and SB 6. There's also printed maps in the back of the room over there, which show a static version of sites that are potentially eligible. These maps are a preliminary screening based on some of the criteria I outlined on the previous slide, but they don't reflect development projects or activity, any approved or submitted development applications. And all of these sites that are shown on these maps and tools must still be screened to ensure that they meet all of the requirements of AB 2011 or SB 6, whichever project type an applicant was to pursue. Now on to development standards. State law establishes different development standards for the three project types. AB 2011 100% affordable and SB 6 projects do not have a maximum-allowed density specified in state law, and they would have a minimum density of 30 dwelling units per acre. The R-30 overlay height limits, setbacks, parking requirements would also apply to these project types, again, the AB 2011 100% affordable and SB 6 project types. The AB 2011 mixed income project type is a little bit different, where state law specifies density, height, and setback standards. So for sites less than one acre, the maximum density is 30 dwelling units per acre. Sites larger than one acre have a maximum density between 40 and 60 dwelling units per acre, depending on the width of the roadway that they front. And sites within a half-mile of a major transit stop or within a low VMT area have a maximum density of up to 80 dwelling units per acre. For mixed, AB 2011 mixed income projects, there's also a maximum height specified in state law that's between 35 and 45 feet, depending, again, on the width of the right-of-way. AB 2011 mixed income projects also do not require vehicular parking. You can require EV parking, bike parking, and disabled parking, but you can't require vehicle parking for residents. And there's a few other characteristics of the project types I also want to highlight, including that SB 6 projects require CEQA review, but the two project type, two project, excuse me, the two other AB 2011 project types only require a Phase 1 environmental assessment to screen for hazardous materials. All three project types would require prevailing wage to be paid. SB 6 also requires a skilled and trained workforce to work on the construction of the project. And lastly, commercial tenant relocation assistance payments may be required in some circumstances for AB 2011 mixed income projects and SB 6 projects, but not the AB 2011 100% affordable. So those are the development standards and a little bit of the process that are included in these two state laws. All of these project types would require a development application with the city and follow the city's design review approval process. And in addition, the city's local coastal program standards also still apply. There have been no applications for AB 2011 or SB 6 projects in Encinitas to date, and there's been no reported application submitted anywhere in any jurisdiction within the County of San Diego and other jurisdictions as of the end of 2024 for AB 2011 and SB 6 projects. But the city is being proactive in developing this ordinance to maximize local control and preserve community character as permitted under state law. All right, we're going to switch gears a little bit to talk about objective design standards for the downtown Encinitas specific plan and North 101 corridor specific plans. Objective design standards are defined in state law. The definition is on the slide, but they involve no personal or subjective judgment. They're intended to be predictable and uniform to all projects, so that they're clear to developers, staff, decision-makers, what the standards that apply to a project are. Two people should be able to reach the same conclusion about a standard, and that's kind of what makes them objective. This often means quantifiable or measurable dimensions as part of the standards, but there are other tools, such as menus or options, that can be objective as part of the design standards. The table on the bottom is just an example to illustrate a subjective design guideline and how that might be adapted to a design standard that's objective. On the left, you can see it says, "Provide articulation to reduce apparent mass and scale." On the right, in green, you can see some of the dimensions that got attached to that that describe how to achieve that articulation. So for every 100 feet of building length, there shall be a plane break, and it shall be at least 15 feet in depth by 25 feet in length. So just illustrating how some of the design ideas get translated into objective standards here. Objective design standards, also really important to note, have to balance kind of predictability with feasibility, and they can't reduce the density of a project according to state law. By establishing objective design standards, the city is able to maintain local control of multifamily residential and mixed-use projects within the downtown Encinitas specific plan and North 101 corridor specific plan. But not only would the objective design standards apply to AB 2011 and SB 6 projects, they would apply to other multifamily and mixed-use projects that must be reviewed against objective design standards. It's also, I think, important to note, we didn't start from scratch in developing these objective design standards. We looked pretty hard at the existing specific plan, the guidelines, the design intent, and tried to adapt a lot of those things into objective design standards and carry that forward. We also looked at other city standards to try and supplement and make sure that the range of topics we included was sufficient and could include all the levers that the city can pull to control and shape design. The draft objective design standards include a range of topics that the city can objectively control. These include transitions and setbacks, including what's labeled here as site planning. The goal is to define and shape the relationship of the building to its surroundings and address adjacencies, particularly with the adjacency of single-family residential. So we did include a transition standard for that condition, but there's also in this section of the design standards, standards for how or what treatments can be included in the front yard setback, as well as a requirement for an upper-story setback for all sites. A lot of the focus of the objective design standards is on building design, and really the goal here is to break up the bulk and mass of large buildings. And the intent is to prevent big, uniform, monotonous boxes, especially those that might have a blank wall, and using the objective design standards to prevent that outcome. Each individual standard, particularly in the building design standard section, plays an important role, but they really are intended to work cumulatively together. They scale from smaller buildings on smaller lots and have more standards that would apply to larger buildings with more mass. Some of the tools in building design include a maximum facade length to limit the overall length of a building facade, requiring separation between buildings when there's multiple buildings on a site and one of those buildings is large. Buildings that have a facade of 100 feet or greater would be required to include a volumetric break that extends from the ground floor to the roof, again, to break up the mass of the building. But smaller buildings would not be required to do that, again, to help with the feasibility and scale the standards to fit with the different scale of development. Other standards we've included are upper-story requirements for a facade offset that would shift the facade back from the front, again, to provide some variation and not have one long facade. So there's a standard for when that's required and how big that needs to be. We also have more detailed standards that really get to variation in the facade through things like windows, balconies, and a requirement to help prevent, again, blank walls from being a part of building design. And another key tool we use is variation in the roof, so you don't have a continuous roof line, especially on these larger buildings. And this is a standard we've developed that would apply to flat roofs or sloped roofs, and we've provided options on how to provide some variation. So the photo on the right in this just is an illustration of how some of those variations do get incorporated into buildings with changes in the roof line, including windows, balconies, and other treatments. So just an example of some of these features here. All right. We also put a lot of emphasis on ground floor treatment. This was one of the ideas that came really strongly from the existing specific plan standards, which had a lot of emphasis on promoting an active pedestrian environment. And so we tried to take inspiration and adapt those guidelines into objective standards. We also had to consider the possibility of residential on these key corridors along 101 as a response to AB 2011 and SB 6 allowing that, when we clearly had a design intent in the specific plans that wanted something else but could be allowed. So we thought about residential entries for individual units, when the residential units are, have a shared entry, or if there's commercial uses on the ground floor. How do you make those transparents? Where do you put building entries to make sure they're active? And what other architectural elements and details are important to include on the ground floor where there is an active pedestrian environment, and you want to have a human-scale design for the buildings and not look up and see the same thing for two, three, four stories, however that may be, however big that may be. Yeah, next slide, open space. So the objective design standards also establish minimum area requirements for common open space and private open space. These standards build on the R-30 overlay standards and incorporate those standards over so that they apply to other projects that are subject to the objective design standards. They also outline a range of options for how to program and what to do with the space that's created, so that there's landscaping and amenities for residents to enjoy. There are also a lot of other important topics that shape design quality of a building, including exterior finish materials, site landscaping, grading and slopes, walls and fencing, streetscape design, lighting, access and parking, and service areas and utilities. So there are standards for all of these things. I'm not going to go into the details of each of these tonight, but they do all contribute to the overall design of the building, and we've addressed that. So I will turn it back to Sarah.
Awesome, thanks, Matt. So now that we've heard an overview of the bills and objective design standards, we are really wanting to hear back from you all on what are the most important design elements and features within the downtown and North 101 corridor that really make Encinitas unique. So here's a reminder of the five design topics that we have covered tonight. And there are many ways that you can share your public comments with us. So if you would like to speak tonight, you will have the opportunity to give oral comment. You can also email me directly. My email is here up on the screen, and I also have business cards available. And another option is to drop off or mail comment cards to City Hall. And another option is to drop off or mail comment cards to City Hall. The public review period for the ordinance and objective design standards documents were made available on the project webpage on October 15, and the public comment will close on November 19. So we want to make sure that the community has plenty of time to review the draft documents and share their feedback. As mentioned previously, you can find all the documents on the AB 2011 and SB 6 project page. So this concludes staff's presentation, and staff, as well as the consultant, are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. First thing I want to make sure is, do we have the portable microphone available for the planning commission, because they're going to probably want to chime in here during deliberation. The order of activities I'd go through, we'll go through questions of clarification, and that includes the planning commission having the opportunity to ask for any questions of clarification before we get to deliberation. Then I'd like to do public comment, and how many public comment do we have?
Four.
Four speakers. We'll do the four speakers, then we'll go into deliberation. What I would propose we do, I don't have the buttons tonight because they don't have buttons, so if maybe, you know, signal me a show of hands, same from down there, and I'll keep a stack of how we go through. But for the first round, I would recommend we just maybe come down the line on the city council and go down the line on the planning commission, as is rather customary. I'll go last, chair will go last, we'll want to hear from the commissioner. So when we go through that first round, and then we'll go open forum by either raising hands or signaling me. So with that, are there any questions of clarification from the council? So Councilmember O'Hara?
Yep. Couple of quick questions on the report. I did see the map, and I think you actually put it up, of the downtown Encinitas specific plan. I didn't see, I didn't see a map for the north 101 corridor. Is that just because it's basically just on the 101, or is there a reason for that?
Sorry, could you repeat your question?
So in the presentation, you had a site map of eligible sites for the downtown specific plan. I did not see one in my packet or on the presentation, and if I missed it, I apologize, for the north 101 corridor. Is that because all the locations are just the very front locations? It's not really?
Yeah, sorry. So this is the, just the, a screenshot of the screen viewer. It's not to show the eligibility, the eligibility, but if you click into it, then it does pop up and you can navigate around. So it's more of an interactive map.
Okay, all right.
That GIs tool was designed for these two.
I get that. Okay. So, and then, Matt, I apologize, you said, you were talking about frontage, and I wasn't sure if you meant to say facade or frontage at one point. You were talking about the, during the downtown specific plan. They're measured slightly differently, correct?
Yes, frontage is related to the eligibility, particularly for the AB 2011 mixed-income project, so you need to have 50 feet of frontage along a commercial corridor. For facades, that's a key term we use to regulate building design as part of the objective design standards.
Okay. You'd kind of bounce back and forth at one point, and I want to make sure you're doing that on purpose. I could easily see them getting confused. And then under objective design standards versus, objective design standards that are numerical, I just wanted to clarify, two people coming to the same conclusion, two things. One, both those conclusions have to fit the objective guidelines, correct?
Yes, that's the intent of state law.
Yep. And then within that, we kind of started to talk about it. Those two people, in the past, it's been, and other issues, other types of bills, it's been a developer's person on one side and generally the city coming to the conclusion, how do we protect the residents in this case and make it so that the, or is there something in there that would protect the residents so that the residents have a advocating voice for them in that, to make sure that they have it in there? Right now, it's geared towards the developer, and that's certainly not in the residents' conclusion. Am I misreading that, or is that accurate?
So the planning, when the application was, would be submitted, planning staff would review it against state law, the very specific definition of state law and the objective design standards, so there shouldn't be any room for interpretation. And then, of course, as you know, we bring all projects' design review to planning commission, and then when they're appealed to city council. And residents can always review applications throughout the process if there's any concern of how those measurements, or if there's any objectivity that they're concerned with, they can always come and review the project plans.
And they generally do, but even when I've seen other professionals and professional consultants from other, from the residents step up there, they're not the consultant on reference. How do we protect the residents in this? And I know I'm getting, I started off with a question of clarity, but I'm asking if that's, well, I'm always going to follow up with that.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Deputy Mayor Lines, and do I have any questions of clarification of the documents, of anything like that? Raise your hands if you, so, okay, next will be Chair Dalton.
All right. Good. I just have two clarification questions. I know we talk about lighting and lighting pollution in the document. I think I understand that we're meeting the requirements of dark sky, but we're not actually putting forward something as complex as a dark sky ordinance. Can you help me just get some clarification on whether we're meeting the requirements of dark sky with this proposed?
Yeah, so we don't have a dark sky ordinance, so we don't have anything to compare it against. We have one from Leavenhan, and there are some shielding and spillage that the document does include, and those are pretty standard. Any development project really does have to make sure that they don't spill over, and so just to ensure that, the objective design standards have some pretty robust standards without having a dark sky ordinance, because it's not part of the scope of work. But in terms of all the downward shielding, ensuring that there's not light spillage and light pollution, even headlights going into a bedroom for parking standards, so they are pretty comprehensive in terms of being objective design standards.
All right, thank you. And my second question has to do with, let me check my notes, public engagement, sorry, slipped my mind. You did, you did mention that it'll come to planning commission in the standard process, but is there any public engagement beyond that? Like we would typically have a CPP process for development, is there that associated with these developments?
Yes. Part of the grant did require some robust community outreach, and we did do three workshops. And then if an application were to come in, it would be required to do that same process.
Would it be required to go through our CPP process?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair Dalton.
Thank you. The downtown specific plan in Encinitas, is there a prohibition of residential use on the ground floor in the front? Are you, like, along 101, are you allowed to put residential use there?
There is a 50% requirement.
So that's not repeated in these because it's already handled in the specific?
Yeah. Steve, if you could speak in clearly.
Clearly?
Yeah.
Or closer. So that's not repeated in the objective design standards because it's already captured in the specific?
We are requiring the 50% limitation on ground floor.
Yes.
Yes.
And similarly, is there a requirement for a minimum ceiling height for commercial use along 101?
No.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Question about the regional mall, where the regional mall, if you go under that exception, you can go up to 60 dwelling units per acre on an acre or more. In the case, we talked about the Target Center, and I want to be very clear what I mean by the Target Center. I mean, south of Lucadia Boulevard and, of course, the parcel, of course, west of El Camino Real. Does the Walmart parcel, which is all part of Encinitas Ranch, but it's Phase 2 and it's 145,000 square feet, does that qualify for the regional mall exception that lets that higher density happen?
Based off of our initial screening, it did not qualify.
And, and so that's because it's across the street or something, and therefore it couldn't be developed as a regional mall site, per se?
It did not meet the qualifications of the regional mall.
Okay, very good, thank you. That was my only clarification question. I'm going to keep pinging planning commission till I get more questions. I know you guys are not that shy, so. Any other questions of clarification? Otherwise, we'll go to, to public. Did I get Susan? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Sharon.
Yes. So I saw that you excluded El Camino Real corridor, right? Because, is that because there's no train stop up there? Was it the train stop that was the reason why the 101 was considered only?
So it did not meet the qualif, El Camino Real did not meet the qualifications of the grant, and only the downtown Encinitas and north 101 corridor met the qualifications of the grant.
That's not enough for me. I need to know specifically why it didn't meet it.
So a couple of the qualifications of the grant was, here, I'm going to share my So right here, where it talks about a transit priority area, low VMT area, those were the main ones of why El Camino did not qualify.
And just to add, as you may recall.
So because it has high VMT.
And, correct, and did meet the criteria. And as you may recall, we just adopted the El Camino Real specific plan, and we had specific tailored objective design standards for that corridor, which would be very different than the objective design standards that we would have for very small lots that are typical in these two specific plan areas.
Okay, I have a couple other things that I'm a little confused about. So on the guidelines that you showed for the objective length of flat roof, you had 50 feet long. It seems awfully long. Where did we decide on 50 feet? How did we get to that number?
We did a lot of site scenario planning, so the ascent team did look at and analyze the downtown Encinitas specific, typical lot, and then the north 101, and then these were the measures that they came up with.
Thank you. And by the way, overall, I do think it's great work on the part of ascent and staff. I just have a few questions, that's all. One of the other questions I have, although a lot of effort was put into avoiding a cookie cutter appearance, you know, of having it look like, you know, row houses that are identical kind of thing, I still think that it looks different than Encinitas community character currently. I still think that it looks rather boxy, potentially, and it, so if, for example, a project is designed in a way that we think doesn't really reflect the way we would like the objective design standards to be applied, it'll come in front of planning commission? We will have say-so on it?
Correct. And they're not intended to be, they're intended to be applied to a variety of different sizes and types of architecture, so, but they do have to be objective.
And Susan, Susan? Yeah, Susan?
And?
Yeah. And if you can, for now, we're just doing clarification questions of the documents and whatnot, so we'll get into full deliberation where I think you're going right now. So if you have more questions of clarification. Anybody else? And you're welcome to.
One clarification that staff would like to make with regards to the 50-foot lineal frontage length, Matt might be able to shed some light to that requirement, but it's, it's not a distance requirement as much as it is a, well, let Matt roll with it, because I'm just going to chew it up.
So if your, if your roof is longer than 50 feet, you still have to provide some variation every 50 feet so that there's a change with a pattern based on a specified dimension. We selected that dimension because it's the standard lot width in downtown, and so it kind of mimics the pattern that's existing in Encinitas today. Not a perfect tool, but a rationale for why we set that standard the way it is, and, yeah.
Okay.
And if the commissioner, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If the commissioner, the council, this is an opportunity for the commission and the council to provide feedback, and if they wanted that less, challenge us to do so.
Okay. And we'll get to that deliberation part. Bob?
Real quick, the timeline associated with a submittal, what is the burden under the state law for the staff to respond to a, an application under AB 2011? Can you just kind of walk through what, because this goes back to how much time the staff and the public have to review a project?
Sure, yeah. So I put together a little backup slide here. So for projects that are 150 units or less, an agency has 60 days to essentially deem a project consistent or inconsistent. And then, once it's deemed consistent, then the agency has 60 days to approve a project. And then 30 days in between review, resumitals. And then for more than a 50, more than 150 units, then that timeframe goes up to 90 days.
So is the agency, as you described, staff, or does that mean it's coming to commissions and all the way through to council?
City, city staff for the deeming consistent, and then the commission for decision of approval.
So then, the, when does the public, I guess, when it's submitted, the public would know that there's a submission, right, under the Development Services website? You would know that there's a submittal. So it completes your review, and at the end of that review, is there a period of time in which it has to be agendized to come to planning commission, and then is there a period of time that it has, that we're bound to, to put it on city council? In other words, does state law mandate additional timelines after this?
I think what you're getting at is the state law, once we deem it complete, or consistent is the terminology of the law, so we'll use those terms, we have 60 days to do our review, and then they have 30 days for resumetal. And once, if, based on that resumetal, if this planning staff has determined it's consistent, then within 60 days, if it's 150 or less, it would have to be approved. So that means approved by planning commission.
So we've had some projects that have taken, you know, five times under the five-meeting law, rule law. That doesn't allow, how does that work if we don't have the five meetings? Maybe it takes the fifth meeting. There's been plenty of projects that have come up to number five, Quail Gardens being one. So how does that work?
This, these are the timeframes that our lovely legislature has put upon us, and this is why we're trying to be proactive in developing an ordinance. And what, part of the beauty of the ordinance is that it takes the 80-some pages of the legislation, it analyzes it based on the lens of our community, and it takes all the guesswork out of it, and it establishes the regulatory framework, including the process, applications, checklist, all the things to help our planning staff so they're not guessing when they get an application, so that they are ready to review it within the confines of the law and within these timeframes. But we don't have five hearings.
Don't have five hearings, so it's, what I'm hearing is 150 days from the time that's submitted to approval.
So if they submit it and it's inconsistent, they have 30 days to resubmit. If it's still inconsistent, then we have 30 days, we can say it's still inconsistent, and they have 30 days to resubmit. So that cycle, it's, that may take a few cycles. But once it's deemed consistent pursuant to the law, we have 60 days.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And if we don't have any other, we'll take public comment now.
First speaker is Glenn O'Grady, followed by Dennis Caden, then Karen Caden, and then
Reading through it quickly, and I may have missed it, but is the, the language in, especially the design elements in the specific downtown and 101 plans going to be updated, or is this just going to be bolted on top with the proviso that the objective, objective design standards will apply, will supersede anything that's in this specific plan? Because I think that's a recipe for confusion, and I think the, the language in the specific plans should be updated to reflect the new language that is being adopted. that is being adopted. And the other thing is, are-- I would think that these would apply to anything that's coming in with the SB 79 that's been recently adopted. And if not, will the final version taken consideration? Anything that would be in that new law that goes into effect in July of next year? So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Caden, Lucadia. So, I was looking at the city anyway. I am a policy 2.4 advocate. For number one here, on the neighborhood transition standards for parcels sharing a property line with parcels that have an existing single dwelling unit, they're saying the minimum is a 15-foot landscape area. The high school record for the long jump is 26 feet, 10 inches. I don't think 15 feet is enough. And if there's a way without breaking the law, we can make that bigger. I mean, if a kid can jump 26 feet, 15 feet is not much there for the neighbor to sneeze and the other neighbor to say Gesundheit. On figure 3.3 of page 185, and you don't have to go there, they're saying any building of a, I think it's 100 feet, needs to have a 20-foot separation. So, why wouldn't you just keep it consistent and make a 20-foot separation the entire way? I also agree with the star, no decks permitted and required setbacks. That's a very good idea. I wish we had that for Pyrrha's point. On page two, please. Common outdoor open space shall incorporate at least two of the following residential amenities. This is Del Mar's design standards, but we should have, if we can, can we have more than two? And try to make it not restrictive, but just, I mean, we need all these things, not just two. Then, number six, outdoor speakers, televisions, or other permanent entertainment features shall not be permitted. Question what the word "permanent" means, and can they be-- I guess, in the code, you would say how many hours they could work, but I'm trying to think about disciplining the environment to just not have that kind of stuff out there. And then, 9C, private open space shall not be permitted on the uppermost roof level. We have one project that's getting that to the neighbors' dislike. Let's see, let's go to number-- page number three. Roof-mounted mechanical equipment. If we can put design standards in there for soundproofing, whether if the existing neighborhood is to the south, can all the noise-making stuff be on the north side of whatever barricade would be on the roof? So, that way, the existing neighborhood is protected from noise. And then, seven. Included but not limited to parking. I don't think we can go there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a quick clarification, what you were showing was from Del Mar?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Karen Caden, and I've been to a couple of their workshops. And I want to thank Matt Gilman for his knowledge and his guidance. He was very clear in his speech and very knowledgeable, and I want to thank him very much. I got a list here. Coastal Act and Local Coastal will apply. Local control, does Prop 50 come into play over so many units? No higher than 39 to 45 feet. No rooftop decks. No bulk. I was going to say, why not dark skies need ordinance in the rest of Encinitas? Pickleball courts are starting to be put in some neighborhoods in Lucadia, and I don't know what the rules are, but I think we need to think about now and tomorrow. I like open space. Color and materials blend in with the surroundings. Identify and preserve any scenic corridor views that may be alongside the 101 and Encinitas or down towards Cardiff. I wish the neighbors along the Pacific Plan area were more involved, because they should have more say, because they live there. And I want to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Patty Stadler-Meyer?
Okay. I feel this is a steamrolling forward of smart city, 15-minute city, disguised as equitable, affordable housing. Now, I'm all for affordable housing, especially affordable home ownership, which is pretty much disappearing in California and maybe the whole country. Because, let's see, Wall Street taking up, seizing a lot of property on pennies on the dollar. Okay, so, I am opposed to this AB 2243, this totalitarian legislation that is stripping local control. And I so appreciate Nancy's comment, her public comment on the website, addressing the car parking not being required, and asking that you do all you can to have adequate parking, including with any developments. And that's my ask also. I did not read the whole 299 pages. I'm sorry, but page seven did get my attention. No car parking required, but bicycle parking required. And those will probably be rental bikes, because the goal of sustainable development is you will own nothing and be happy, even living 500 feet from the freeway like earlier mentioned. So, the goal with smart cities is total surveillance and control with 5G cameras, microphones, and limiting movement by putting barriers to car ownership and use. So, thank you. If there's anything in this that is trying to preserve any kind of local control and, you know, good for Encinitas. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes speakers.
What I'd like to do is do one round. We can do it by putting your name in. Jim, I know you have some time limits. If you want to go first, I'm okay with that. But what I'll do is make sure we get one of everybody, then we'll go through and anybody out of Planning Commission before we go through a second bite at the apple. So, Jim, you got the floor. If you're ready.
Yeah. Just what packet was the developmental objective standards on in here, in our packet? I'm sorry, I marked it, and with 299 pages, it's--
170?
170. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the downtown Encinitas.
Yeah. That'll work.
And the north 101's on page 219.
Okay. All right, so, move to California. Don't bring your car. We don't have trouble with public transportation. And walk wherever you go, so good luck getting a job. And vote for different people up in Sacramento. So, first off, I want to start by thanking staff. I know you work hours and hours and hours and hours. Matt Gilman, I want to thank you as well for assisting the city on this. Really grateful to see that there are design and development objective standards. I do think there's some room to go. Very clearly, thinking other projects like SB 35 projects, which of course, some of these apply to SB 6. We seem to have had our residents really speak up and tell us that they want planning commissions and councils who look at those objective standards, and they hold our developers to those objective standards. I'm short on time, so I'm just going to say that hasn't been the case up to this point. And I expect this body up here and that body sitting down there to do that going forward. Objective standards are not something you gush over. It's not a lovely feature of a building. It's a straight feature that provides safety and accountability and holds the developers to a certain standard and empowers our planning department and our development department to hold the developers accountable. So, it's up to all of us, who've been voted here by the residents, to make sure that they're represented in that, and those objective standards that empower our city at the government effort are followed through on. I'm really pleased to see those on here. And I'm absolutely looking forward for these bodies to continue and move that forward and really lean on those objective standards and get away from opportunities where we look at things we like about buildings. Fire escape routes that we prefer over objective fire road distances that impose poles that should be objectively standardized and not because we like the project. We need to get back to that. And I know I'm being a little bit statementy here, but speaking for the residents, they spoke loud in November, and this was part of what they were speaking about. So, with that, a couple of quick questions. I would love to see us, if possible, figure out everywhere we can to tighten up where it says law is silent on here, to dial in our objective standards more, or to see if there's any way we can really make the law a little less silent and get the law in our back pocket a little bit better. Because I know there are people out there who are going to watch this at home or in their office, and they're going to figure out ways to take advantage of that law being silent. We can't have that. So, I'd love to see us kind of dive in on that. One more piece with the timing. I think Commissioner Pendegras asked some good questions about that. I would like to see if, because of those timings and because it's not a meeting, a meeting important-- I would love to see the ability for some of these to come straight to council, skip over Planning Commission when time gets tight, where there's a window that would be appropriate for that, so that we don't have something mull around. We don't have somebody decide to go home at 10:00 PM, because they don't want to stay past the close of the meeting and have a project get approved that the residents don't want. So, if we can make that go quicker, I don't want to be handcuffed by a commission that meets once a month when we meet every week. So, I'm going to pause there. I'm going to yield the floor. I know some of the great comments from the community that came up here. I know that the rest of the council and the Planning Commission are going to address those, so I'm not going to dive into those. I'm just going to finish up by saying, you know, again, can't emphasize the appreciation for the objective standards you've added. Let's keep going. And all of us here and sitting down there, let's make sure we follow those, and those are our guiding star in all this. Because up to this point, the city hasn't always had that. And it's up to us to start doing it.
Any other council member want to hop in? If not, I can.
Okay. I just wanted to get the questions asked that were coming from the podium. So, I was just going to go down to the staff, just to make sure they get asked. For Glenn O'Grady, right, for his questions, is this an overlay to our specific plan, our 101 specific plan?
Yeah, good question. So, the scope of the grant didn't allow us to revise the entire specific plan. So, what we have done to maintain integrity of the existing specific plan, we've added this as an appendix to the specific plan, because there's some stuff that isn't, we can't touch in the objective design standards. But I think it's really important to point out, because the downtown-- both specific plans are quite dated. They don't have the teeth for staff to implement. Any kind of subjective-- or objective standards are very subjective. So, these standards are very-- an extremely important tool to allow the planners to get the kind of developments that really reflect the community character to the extent we can.
And ready for a future ordinance update or a general plan update possibly? Basically, we could use that in a future update or some of these standards?
Yes.
That's kind of what we'd do. And then, to go to Dennis's questions, was that-- I think that was it for Mr. O'Grady. That was the base of the question. Dennis's questions were, the 15-foot setbacks, can we stay with the 20s that he found, you know, elsewhere? Or is that-- what was the reasoning for that?
So, since Matt and Ascent wrote those developments, or objective design standards for Del Mar, I'm going to let him start, and I'll jump in.
We do have in the downtown Encinitas specific plan, or downtown Encinitas objective design standards and the north 101 objective design standards, the similar 15-foot transition setback adjacent to single family. I think Dennis was referring to the 20-foot building separation requirement. So, when then the conceptualization of that is for really large buildings on a site with multiple buildings, you don't push them together and make it look like it's one big building. So, the 20 feet was about separation between multiple buildings. We could explore 20-foot setback, but we do need to be mindful, I think, of how we scale that and when it would apply, particularly for smaller projects, where if the lot is 50 feet and you do have a 20-foot side setback, it's difficult to then build a feasible project.
And that's kind of the idea, that this is down on Second Street predominantly and then up in north 101. So, there's not a lot of room to play with already. So, I hope that answers some of the possible. He talked about the soundproofing, and I missed page two of all my notes, but on page three, it was the soundproofing requirements for the rooftops. Any answers for that question? Requiring the soundproofing?
We can absolutely look at including an objective design standard for that.
The idea, right? We have people living up top, and next thing you know, it's dark, you know, it's-- it's cold out, it's dark out, it's just traveling through all of Second, you know, from 101 all the way down. And then, he didn't get quite to the page four, the parking questions. But I saw that we could put electric parking in. Could we require 100% electric parking or to match? I think my point is, is it doesn't have to have an electric car in there. At some point, we could make sure that we have all the parking that we need, though.
The bill, for some reason, included the provision of bike and electric parking requirements. I don't know why.
Could we make it a two-per-one or whatever, a requirement for a certain amount? Or is it, is there a limited amount that we can require per unit?
I'm going to let them look at the 80 pages of bill.
Yeah. Yeah. Really, it's not really a question that has to be answered right this second. The meaning behind the question is, is there a way for us to establish that they have to put in all of the electric parking, which is ultimately could be anything to park there, as long as it's a space that's dedicated for parking?
If we want electric parking. I mean, we'll take a look at what we can do under the law.
Correct.
We've done as much as we can.
But just like in the lower lot down here, I can still pull my car in. If it's not an electric vehicle, I can still park in the same spot. So, it would be a way for us, again, if we get backed up against some of the parking issues as downtown permits. Okay. And then, I guess I'll just, I'll go to Karen's, the dark skies. There's no way for us to put into provision for the dark sky, I'm assuming, in this, because it's specific to AB 211 and SB 6.
Correct. That's a whole separate work effort.
Correct, yeah. I was just making sure. Open space. The color consistency, I'm not sure if that's something that we can add or--
We do have, that was some great feedback that we got from the community that, so we do have in there that more natural colors, and we have actually avoided prohibited colors such as bright neon. So, those are incorporated.
Love it. Thank you. And then, to more of what Patty was saying, do we think that this is a 15-city, you know, trajectory? Is this pushing us towards that model? I think it's, I think I know the answer, but I'm just asking you guys as the planners, is that what you guys, do you guys know about the 15-minute city stuff? I'm assuming--
I am not familiar with the details of that, so--
Do you know the details, Matt?
Not intimately, no.
Yeah, but you understand the concept.
Yeah, walkable within 15 minutes.
Live, work, play. Do you see this bill being a trajectory in that regard, from what your understanding of a 15-minute city is?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Reason being that because the bill allows development in all commercial zones within the city, they could be located in many different places.
Got it. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Those are all my questions for it.
We'll go Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Yes, I have some specific comments. Thank you. First, I want to start by saying that I have a history of supporting 100% affordable housing in our community. And so if this is a tool for helping us achieve that, I'd be interested in learning more and supporting 100% affordable housing. So I look, I wanted to make that comment. So there's a couple of things that I think we should add that we don't have. So I'll start with that. One of the things is a discussion about permeable surfaces. And I already talked to our staff about this, so let me, let me just give this a quick cover. In the past, we've talked about permeable surfaces in terms of when we're, when we're building, we're adding more, whether it's concrete or a floor area. What we often create is a problem with not only the landscape being able to have enough soil to survive in, but also increasing our runoff. And so then we need more storm management and more stormwater quality treatment. And so we're compounding the issues to our community when we add more hard areas. Something that I feel like staff is saying they'll look into is how can we quantify the amount of permeable surface, whether it's landscape or maybe it's permeable pavers, but it's to help us with our stormwater management when we do development like this. And I've gotten the feedback from our consultant and from staff that that is something we could develop an objective standard on and you will look into it. And so I'm seeing some heads nodding. Thank you. One thing I don't see covered in this document is the preservation of mature trees. One of the things we talk about a lot and we keep on saying, community character, preserve community character. And I was surprised to see not a mention of preservation of mature trees. We have, Patty, you're nodding because we have talked about this in the past in regards to other objective standards in our community. And what we've done in the past is looked at it in terms of first target is to consider preserving mature trees that are on a property. That can't always happen, we understand. And so then how do you mitigate if you do impact a mature tree? And we can put objective standards like you need to replace it in kind as far as species at a three to one ratio or a two to one ratio, but something that leaves the community character intact for the next generation of tree that grows. Does, does staff have a comment on that? Because I didn't talk to you in advance about that.
Yes, so we are drafting our mature tree ordinance. We're not sure where it will go if it gets approved. And we do have a reference to our under, on page 180 about heritage trees. But in terms of explicitly calling out mature trees, we have to be careful because we can't impede development, right? That's the criteria of the bill. So our sites in these areas in particular are quite small. And I would, I would defer to the work effort. We've done a ton of analysis, a lot of work with our committees and commissions, so...
I don't want to be silent on preservation of mature trees in this document. So I want us to bring it, bring it forward as our objective. And we understand that we're not putting it there to limit a developer's ability to do this because we know we can't do that. But what we're, what we're doing is saying this is important to the character of our community. And, you know, we're talking about textures, we're talking about, you know, facades. If we're silent on our vegetation, I think we've lost a really good opportunity. I would like us to add that.
Yeah, I think we can consider that for sure from a staff perspective if, if the council agrees and the commission or however you guys want to go about making a direction to staff. One of the things, like Patty mentioned, we are going through that effort right now. It does include some of the provisions like you indicated where there's a ratio. If one does get removed, there's a lesser ratio of replacement if it's, if it's native habitat, trees types. There's lots of different characteristics. I'd hate to step onto that, but I will mention that the way that these provisions are written, if there's no standards, then the other standards do apply. So for instance, these, those standards for our native, for our mature tree ordinance, those are going to be applied to commercial properties. They're going to be applied to multifamily properties. There's only certain areas that they're not applied to, but all of these areas, they would be applied to. So this provision would be applied to that once it's adopted.
And we don't have it adopted today.
We don't, we do not.
I'm not going to put that crystal ball in the future. Let's just, we have the opportunity here to add it. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, you bet.
My, my next comment is about our definition of open space. I have a few things to say about it. And I do want to go to the Del Mar standard again to point out that their definition of open space and the common open space says that it would be a minimum of 25 feet wide in any dimension. And I think ours, we say 15. And so I would like us to consider the 25-foot wide like Del Mar has. And I don't see a reason why we are so different from Del Mar that we wouldn't be able to also use the 25-foot wide minimum dimension for open space. When you get down to the 15-foot, for the same reasons mentioned about the concerns with the distances between the setbacks is, it's what can you do in 15 feet, especially open space? Open space, the intent is of open space, and this goes to the definition we have of open space. I would think the intent of open space is an area where people can sit, can picnic, can hang with their family. And when we're saying a minimum 15 feet wide, I just would hate to see strips of 15-foot wide throughout developments and it's being captured as open space. I don't think it achieves the open space objective. So I'm going to call to how we do describe open space. And, well, my computer actually is not on right now, so let me just go by memory. We define open space in this document as to include decks and terraces and sidewalks and terrace balconies. And then we also have landscaped areas. We definitely have landscape covered as 20% open space needs to be plant materials. But I would challenge that a deck on a second floor is not open space. It's, it's not an area where people would benefit from sitting under a tree. I think it's outdoor space, yes. But as far as open space, I think we want to be more specific about what would be acceptable in open space. To include decks and balconies on second floors, this has come before us in the past too. I don't think the community thinks that's open space. I don't think it's open space. That's just outdoor space and there's a difference. So I would like us to think about what those definitions are and be more, capture more the things that people want when it comes to open space, which is areas big enough for the family with a dog to get together and sit and enjoy the outdoor space. I'm going to try to cut it short here. The city of Del Mar actually excludes, specifically excludes walkways from their open space. And I would like to model that as well. And they do call their common open space either ground level or on podium, but not on the roof. So I'd like us to follow some of the, those definitions that are in Del Mar's. And I'll wrap up there.
Okay. Councilmember San Antonio.
I just wanted to echo again what Patty brought forward regarding the parking. If there's any way, I mean, if any things, these things get built, I mean, along that 101 corridor, I mean, it's just, parking's already tough and we already have to deal with, with that. So I, if there's anything we can put in there, I mean, Luke said it too, parking is, we already have it in some of our, our developments coming in right now. So if there's anything in there that we can put in to guard against that, just, we need parking. So also, is there anything in here about, I saw just a quick blurb about the outdoor dining. Obviously, we have some issues right now or parking, the outdoor dining taking up parking spaces. So is there anything that we can put in here for that as well?
Going back to your question about the parking standards, there are parking standards for two of the three project types.
Yeah.
And it refers back to the R-30 standards, which is the normals. They have actually special standards for R-30 developments. So there are, there are parking standards for these projects. Now, depending if they're in those other type of areas where the state exempts them from parking, that could encumber the requirement of parking. But beyond that, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but the two project types, including the 100% affordable and the SB 6 sites are, do require prior standards. And then the other site, the mixed income project site, it allows the parking requirements for the bicycle and electric that we talked about a little bit earlier. Unfortunately, we would have to have those standards in our code to implement those, which I don't believe we do right now for, I could be wrong, though. I'm still catching up to some of the code.
Okay. Is there anything in there for the outdoor dining? I know I just said something on the setback, so I just wanted to just bring that up just because we do have, you know, that's kind of an issue in downtown Encinitas right now. So, and I just want to say thank you again for, this is a, it's a big report and it's a lot, lot to take in and it's, I know you spent a lot of time. It, I mean, it literally labels everything. So many different parts, like the, the setbacks, I mean, it is, it's comprehensive. So thank you. And I know that you're a local, so I guess in some of our closed sessions, we've been talking about how important that is to have somebody from here that knows kind of the feel of the town. So it's nice to know that you're, you brought that into your report. So thank you.
Okay, I'll hop in here. I want to reframe where we are and what we're talking about here. You know, projects go through planning commission and they can be commercially, it can be single family, they can be multifamily, they can be mixed use. We are only talking tonight about mixed use and multifamily that go through design review. And so this is, and what the state's saying is, yeah, you know, we used to trust our local planning commission to do design review and make sure the size, structure, bulk, mass, color, shape, material, parking fit within the design review standards. They were subjective. Now the state's coming through with these laws and saying, nope, can't do that. So this is our best attempt to try and counter that and codify our community character into objective design standards. I think you've done as great a job as you can, given the constraints that the state has put us under in this case. And I still believe we need to go for local control to get this power back so we can go back to design review and actually have community character preserved. I believe that even with this great document, we're going to get cookie cutter, looking like articulated, same, same, same for every multifamily mixed use project that goes in downtown 101 and, and north, north 101, right? And they're going to look the same. And then as we propagate this same concept probably through all the other specific plans and even citywide on a different, different dime, not on this, this grant, we're going to be replicating that, that similar view. But quite frankly, you look at the difference of what would you do differently in this document on downtown 101? How radically different would it look if you took that very same document, adjusted it slightly and said, now it's for El Camino Real? They're going to look darn near the same, you know, maybe a little bigger in scale on 101, on El Camino Real. But, so I'm cautioning everybody that, that this is no panacea. This is not going to fix and help our community character that much. It's a, it's a little bit, it helps, it helps, it's enforceable under the current laws. Then the other thing you have to layer on top of that is California density bonus law. Everything can be waived. Heights, all this stuff, if it impacts the ability of the developer to hit their bonus density, it can be waived. And, and that means it's meaningless. So I'm taking everything we're writing here with a grain of salt. I think it's a good idea. It's, we've got to do it, but it's not a complete solution. So one of the things I really want to get back to, and I've talked to staff and it's in here, is I'm always looking for design review, objective design review standards that are impervious to waivers. That is so important. So one of the things the old planning commission did, and I don't know if Susan, I think Susan was on that commission, we actually proposed, and it got in there in one form, a maximum average unit size of so many square feet. And it got adopted, but when the council adopted it, they took it from the 800, 900 rental ownership to 1,015, I believe it is, which is really above market rate. And the idea of having an average maximum unit size was twofold. One, it made the, the housing more naturally affordable, workforce housing. That's what these laws are being written for, yet we're building luxury condos out of them, right? We're building 1,100, 1,200, 1,300 square foot and averaging almost 1,150 square feet, like Fox Point Farms is probably in the 1,000, 1,100 square feet, average, average. We need to be building more with an average closer to 800 so you have 600 square foot units that are more naturally affordable. That's the excuse for these laws, SB 11, AB 2011, SB 6, AB 2243. So what I would ask that we do here, and I've talked to staff about this, is we implement that same, and it's in here, but right now it says 1,0145 rental ownership. I'd like to see those numbers lowered to 800, 900, like the, like we did do, the previous council did with me, followed me on that one, on the El Camino Real specific plan. Has that lower limit already in it? I'd like to see it done on these two specific plans. Quite frankly, I'd like to see the same thing applied to multifamily mixed use citywide for the, it'll mostly apply to these large projects. That's one item. I don't think we, I also want to see objective safety standards. And I think, Luke, this is something you'll, you'll like. We need to put in here objective standards that are about safety, that if they get waived, it's grounds to find that, that it's not a safe project. So, and, and we've talked about that for some time. So that's the direction I'd like to give. I think this council would support that. The one thing, we answered most of Glenn O'Grady's questions, we didn't, I'm not sure about the alignment with SB 79, whether there's anything in SB 79 in particular that would be triggered, that would, that would be affected by these objective, I don't know if staff wants to respond to that. And is there any interaction between SB 79 and the objective design standards other than the normal project?
Our interpretation of SB 79 is the city is not subject to that, so there wouldn't be any interaction.
Okay, so we're safe. And since SB 79 is the third rendition, SB 50, SB was 1125 or something like that, I have no doubt that we'll see a fourth version trying to capture everybody in here. But, so we ought to be ready for that and think about what if it did? Are there things in here that could help us protect our community character from the overreach in Sacramento? And then the last item I have is on page 178. And it gets back to, I think this may have been Glenn's comment too, about the precedence and how does this overlay? Now, again, we're only talking about design review projects and we're talking about the precedent. And I have heartburn with the way the precedent is written here, that the, these, the ODS, the, this, this designer view code is, will prevail over, and if you look at sections 1.3.1, 1.3.2, it basically says that if there's a conflict between the specific plan and these objective design standards, these very rote, very mechanical design standards, that the mechanical design standards will take precedence. I want to keep with the spirit of the downtown specific plan. And I'm not sure that if they're in direct conflict, I want to default to this. I would like to default to the code, as I would with the municipal code. And this gets back to dark skies, to mature tree, to native plant. I like how you integrated the native plant ordinance into this. You basically said it would be a... I like how you integrated the native plant ordinance into this, you basically said it would be 50% native, unless or until we adopt a native plan, or, I like that approach. But ultimately, I think our municipal code should take precedence, and I worry that when you put this static document as precedent automatically over our municipal code, over our other, our other specific plans, our general plan, whatever, I think that's wrong. This is a lower level supporting document, I would, I would reverse that, I would break that and go back to a standard hierarchy. So those, those are my big picture, general comments about this, so. It's well put together, it's not the first objective design standard, I think we've worked on them before. I have with, in my old role, and, and this is, this is an exceptionally well-done version, it's just, you're, you know, you're trying to, you know, chop down a tree with, with a whip, you know, it's, it's, it's great, it's admirable, but we're fighting a big, big problem that's coming at us, and so we should keep doing this, but don't lose sight that we still gotta go for local control. So with that, I'll yield to the planning commission, do we have anybody that wants to speak first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So I just had a couple of things, looking at the document. So one of them was actually about the commons, the common open space as well. And this document says that at least two of the following shall be incorporated as open space. It's 4.3.6. And I just have some concerns that this applies to projects of all sizes, and I have some concerns that a large project would say, we're gonna put in interactive public art and a, a community garden. Whereas if we had a project that was larger and had a lot more units, I would want them to be, to put in something that really served more of the community in the complex. So I know when we were doing objective design standards before, we kind of broke it down, so if it was a different, different sizes of projects, they were required to do more. So I don't know if we could incorporate something like that, I don't know what council thinks about that, but incorporate. I think we talked about doing it by number of units, we broke it into different, you know, if you have 0 to 50 units, or 50 to, 51 to 100, you had to do more than if you had a smaller sized apartment complex or mixed use complex. So that was one of my comments. And, and I think we also had, I think they got, we also had areas where you could get points, so if you did certain, you had to get like, let's say, 20 points, and you could, they could pick how they were going to get the 20 points by putting in different, different amenities. So that's something maybe to think about too, some kind of point system for amenities for common space. My other one was just kind of like, I didn't know if this was on purpose or needs a cleanup, and it has to do with the lighting. In the, the section where it talks about if there is a wall or fence along a sidewalk, there has to be, I think, an entrance every, I don't know exactly where it is. Certain number of feet, there has to be an entrance that has to be lit. When you talk about lighting in 4.3.5, it calls out to the Encinitas Municipal Code, chapter 40, 30.40, but when it talks about the lighting along the wall or the fence, it doesn't call out to that. And I don't know if it needs to call out to it too, to be consistent, so something that I noticed. And this is gonna be kind of silly, and maybe people really don't like concrete, unfinished concrete block wall. Unfinished concrete brick walls, but it says that they shall not be used on walls and fences. And I know that when we were doing the objective design standards, we tried really hard not to like, call out one particular type of, you know, chain link, we tried not to like, call out something and say that it could never be used, because we didn't want to control design that much, because people could think of a situation where it could be okay. So I'm not saying that I'm a huge fan of unfinished concrete block walls, but I don't know if we'd want to be that specific, because it's something that could be used in a good way on some projects. So, that's all.
Okay, are we on? Okay. So, I had a few things that occurred to me as I was looking through everything. First of all, as I said before, I think it's really great work and really hard work that you guys have done, and you've covered an awful lot that is very, very important for making it not turn into something cookie cutter and something that does try to be more reflective of our community character, so I really applaud your hard work. So don't be offended by my comments, because these are things that are tweaks, more or less. One thing I'm wondering about, one thing I really notice in our community, it's really hard to figure out where we are sometimes, because the street number and unit number are not clearly displayed. I wondered if you could put something a little bit more explicit about that, but not have it be cookie cutter. So, for example, you know, I wouldn't want to see it look exactly identical on everyone, but I would like to be able to know where I am when I'm going down the road and I see a number, you know, I hope to be able to find the number displayed prominently and legibly, something like that, maybe that kind of language. But I didn't see anything about the unit addresses and labeling. So that's one point that I think you could improve on a little bit. On page 196 out of 299, something about elevation 3 feet, I think you meant recess 3 feet. Perhaps there may be, you can take a look at that and see what you meant. Page 198, about the color. I have such a problem when we're reviewing projects in planning commission, that we don't have enough standard about the color. And just saying natural might not really cut it, because what I don't want to see, black might be a natural color, but I don't want to see an all-black building. Purple could be a natural color, but I don't want an all-purple building necessarily. Somehow we need something in that objective standard that, that allows for artistic and creative expression, but without making it ugly? I don't know how to put it better, I'm sorry, but I just struggle with that. On page, that was also on page 247 out of the 279 in the draft, you know? Okay, and then. I'm trying to read my own writing, sorry. Oh, some areas could be cleared up a little bit. I saw in some of the graphics, plants in pots, and you called out different sizes and things, but I'm just wondering, in general, on every aspect, is maintenance included somewhere? That they have to, if they put plants in pots, who are they keeping it up with? Is that gonna look the same down the road, three years, five years, 10 years down the road? You know, are they having to maintain what they do? So that, let's say the tree outgrows, the container or whatever, do they have to put a new tree? I don't know, because I don't see anything in here about the maintenance. I think that applies to everything that you do in the, in the objective standards, that everything has to require a certain amount of maintenance, and I heartily agree with council member Linda's saying about the permeable paving. I really don't see any reason why you can't make 100% permeable paving. We have so many options for permeability, and we have so many problems with stormwater and drainage. And so the more you can require permeable paving, the better. And in general, the less paving, the better. So that, and when we have landscape right now in our commercial Encinitas Municipal Code, you'll allow paving that's permeable to count as landscape. But the problem with paving, it's good in terms of the drainage, but it doesn't do carbon sequestration the way that a plant does. So I have trouble with the landscaping in general that we already have in EMC, and so I don't see, I'm not sure that this is gonna help, but maybe something in the objective standard there, so that the pervious, at least, that all of the hardscape would be pervious, and then that the plants are maintained and inspected, I suppose. Because otherwise, if they're not, we don't know what happens down the road. That plant could die and not be replaced, and they put in some other little grass or non-native or whatever. But I think 100% native plant is reasonable and public right-of-way. On their private property, sure, 50% maybe is enough, but, but in the right-of-way, it's our land, it's public. And so I think we should say 100% native, and I think that a certain percentage of native trees is already part of our code, but that's really important. Trees are more permanent, and they do, do much, much filtration, much habitat, all kinds of things that smaller plants don't do. And let's see what else I have here. Oh, yeah. I think that, if I, if I can read my writing, I might have more.
I'll try to be brief. I love to have impervious waivers, but everything from the setbacks to the wings that extend into the side yard setbacks we have in Cardiff, you know, those all get waived. And I think maybe, to the mayor's point, if, if, there's got to be some more teeth if you want this to really work. Anything that we do can just be waived. Unlimited waivers on the affordable, I mean, the idea behind AB 2011 and SB9 is affordable housing. So you probably already are using the density bonus laws as a base case, so once you're doing that, you can waive all of the parking requirements. We can try to put under the base code, I mean, it's a great idea to make it all EVs, and those parking don't have to be an EV to park there, but you could waive the parking requirements. They've set that up to be a business decision, not so much a code requirement. And so they can waive any amount of parking based on certain density bonus laws. So if there are other suggestions for the impervious waivers, I think that's probably where we're gonna get some really good teeth into the document. The comment about color is a good one. One of the projects came before planning commission chose to be an all-white project. And I think we wrestled with that at the beginning of the conversation, but given the applicant, which was the Orthodox Church on Manchester, their color scheme was all white. And I, I think there just had to be at least some flexibility in the design standards of the planning commission to have to allow for a unique situation that is consistent with the site itself, but still falls within some variability, and I think the applicant was very happy that it was approved under their design. So there are some unique situations, and maybe there'll be more, so I'd hope that the design standards would have some flexibility specifically over situations like that. Real quick, I don't think I have too many. The only other thing, it's probably more for our code cleanup and our work plan, but I just have a gripe, so I'm gonna use this form, is when projects get submitted, there have been a couple of large projects that have come through, that come through at four towers, and then they come back as two towers, but we're still working on the same project submittal, and they're not getting restarted again. And is that something that we can redesign in the code, or put it in the design standards? Or something that's like, if you come up with a 500-unit project in four buildings, and then come back with a two-project, two-building, seven-story building, that's a new project. I don't know if that's a design standard, but it really irks me how that worked, and that cut into our decisions on, on one of the projects here in, on the Buy Right project. Your comment, Mayor, about the size of the units, I think Chair Dalton's gonna have some comments regarding total size and how the density, how the affordable codes view a minimum size unit. You mentioned 800, I'd be interested to see if we could look at that being an average size for the entire project, because you want to have some flexibility over family-sized units as part of the mix from a business standpoint and probably from a community standpoint. So maybe it's a three-bedroom is a bigger unit, some studios, but at the same time, meet an average unit size, that should accomplish that.
That's what the code says today, that's exactly it.
Right. Yeah, I guess, that's about it, sorry.
Okay. I'd like to echo some of what Mayor Ellers has kind of alluded to or has stated pretty clearly already. A developer can waive all of these standards, and so we're putting a lot of energy into thinking that we are taking back local control, and this is not really achieving that. I would also point out that no developers have used 2011 or SB6 to build in a commercial zone. It is not a popular state law for them to utilize. So with that in my mind, I'm also, as an architect, very adamantly opposed to trying to create a paint-by-numbers approach to design. And I would suggest that objective design standards do as much to prevent good design as they do to encourage or discourage bad design. I suspect that if we look around the city at the beloved buildings that we hold dear, near and dear to us, they were built without objective design standards. And so I think there's only so much value to the design standards, particularly as it gets down to the minutia about the color of the building, the type of material that should be on it. Those are very, just fraught for problems, I think. Mayor Ellers, you, you mentioned an average unit size, I really like that type of thinking. I think that is an item that is probably not waivable, or, you know, does not diminish a developer's ability to fit the units that they desire to put on a project. I do agree, I think to Commissioner Prendergast's comment, you know, there needs to be some tailoring of that to, to what affordable housing might be. I know if this was a tax credit, 100% affordable project, there are, you know, state mandated minimums, say for a four-bedroom, a three-bedroom, and if a client was trying to provide family housing, they're required to provide 25% three-bedroom, 25% two-bedroom, and that might skew an average. So I think, I, I support the concept, I think it's a great one. I think there's some crafting of the language to, to make it happen in a, in an effective way. The open space requirements, you know, I'm a little conflicted, I think we're talking about kind of downtown areas with traditionally small lots, and I agree with Commissioner Ryan's comments that we're all envisioning the 400-unit massive big projects. I just don't think a 50 by 100 or a, you know, 100 by 100-foot lot down here in the downtown area is going to generate that level of development, and I think scaling the open space amenities to the project size would be appropriate. It seemed to me that most of the amenities listed in that were very kind of active recreational activities, basketball courts and soccer field, like, you know, it just seemed very like a school park or a school playground, you know, playgrounds and all that. And, you know, in a smaller, more intimate development project that we would hope to see in these areas, you know, a barbecue area, a sitting area, some other more passive uses would be appropriate for those, those projects. I, I found the, the document right now focuses a lot on the building, the articulation, the architectural elements every 20 feet, a roof line. I'd like to see it focus more on the urban design, the, the public realm, but what side, what size should the sidewalk be? What, you know, if a building is gonna be 40 feet or 45 feet tall, if it might be allowed, what's the, you know, what's the section through the street? allowed, what's the, you know, what's the section through the street, you know, with the street trees, and how much plant or how much sidewalk is, is permitted? And those are very kind of, I don't know, you see those a lot in city planning documents. And the only kind of sections I see in this document are about a driveway and the side setback from a house. The sec, the, the step backs and setbacks required above the first floor, it seems like in these, we already allow a two-story building, but all the step backs begin at the second story. Seems like it would be consistent with all our other buildings and zoning if we, if we began the additional step backs at the third floor, not the second floor. Presumably, the, the neighborhood context that we're building within will allow up to a two-story building already. I think the wall length is listed as 30 feet maximum, but the roof length is listed at 50 feet maximum. I tend to think that 30 feet's too narrow. I think it, it's going to create a haphazard or a chaotic look emphasizing the vertical elements of a building and, and not so much the horizontal. I think we have a historically 50-foot lot size, and a 50-foot width would mimic that historic small lot development, and I think 50 feet would be appropriate. Corrugated metals outlawed as a roofing or as a siding. I'd hate to diminish someone's creative use of corrugated metal and give them the opportunity to do that. Same thing with painted brick. I can think of a lot of very attractive painted brick buildings, and why we would try to eliminate that, I don't know. So that's the, the heart of where I am. I think ultimately, if the city wants to take back control, we've got to find ways of incentivizing the developers to follow the rules about height or setback or parking. And the state is diminishing your stick dramatically, and it's time we start thinking about some carrots. Is there something we could offer a developer, a streamlined approval process, if you don't deviate from the height limit of, of the city's height? If you respect these setbacks, we'll give you an additional unit or, you know, some, there's some way of providing something above and beyond the state law that allows us then to insist that you don't use a waiver or an incentive to deviate from all the other rules that we want to implement.
So are you thinking like, in lieu, so if you take down one mature tree, we have a ratio of three mature trees into a city park? I mean, are you, in lieu of an open space not quite making 50 by 50, you could do 40 by 40, you, I don't want to say in lieu of fee, because the money just goes somewhere. Are you, is there a quid pro quo or a trade-off for incenting somebody who has site constraint but needs to build the units? We need the units to, to follow your rules. Is there some sort of, if you give me this, I'll give you that?
One thing that comes to mind in San Diego, they go to an FAR-based building. They say if you build a building and it stays under this FAR, we don't care how many units you divide it into. They're going to get smaller and smaller units. But if you're going to use this program where you get, quote, unlimited density, you can't deviate from the FAR, or you can't deviate from the height limit. So if the city wants to enforce a 30-foot height limit, or, you know, some, you would, you've got to pick your priority here, you can't have it all, you know, the state's saying that.
But you're giving the developer an opportunity to...
Yeah. They might get more, they, they've got to get something out of the deal. They might get 10 more units out of this deal. But we're going to get a building that doesn't go to 45 feet tall. And we can insist on that because they can't get the additional 10 units without the city's rule, because the state rule doesn't go that far.
I remembered the other things. I did agree with unit size being smaller. In fact, I've lived in very small units very comfortably, as little as 325 square feet, and I think a microunit size is done in a lot of places, just very successfully. 325, 625, 800, something like that, some break out. I also think, in terms of the open space, I forgot to mention, I really think there should be objective standard palette of what can go in that open space. And I think community gardens should be one of the things, you know, for the development. And as far as the step backs, I disagree. I think because of solar, we, we don't want to restrict sunlight. So I think that's why we need that step back even at level two.
I think that is, so I'm going to take a little, little chair prerogative here. Councilmember O'Hara asked a question, so I think I'm going to ask a question, his question of staff. And it's basically got to do with, what happens when SB 35 with its timing requirements overlaps or conflicts with SB 6 and their timing requirements? Have we taken that into account? And is there anything we need to do here to clarify SB 35 versus SB 6? I got my note from Jim as he left, so I'm, I'm playing Jim right now.
So SB 35 requires an application process. They would have to first submit that. There are some provisions of both laws that account for when different laws come into play. We would look at that once they were submitted. I don't know off the top of my head which one would overlap and, or take precedent, because it really depends on the situation that's being proposed. So it's not just a this or that, it's, there's so many nuances between both of them, it's hard to say.
So I think as direction, I'd be curious whether in any way would cause the 150 days to go lower. You know, if you then apply SB 35 to one of the segments of SB 6, does that cause a shorter time? I don't need an answer tonight, you know, I think we would all like to understand how all this is going to work together and, you know...
One second. So Sarah has provided a really good instrument for us when it comes to guidelines and a toolbox of different parameters that apply to this project. And one of the, one of the comments from one of the council was, they would like to take off or look deeper into the ones that don't apply. The purpose of the saying "does not apply" is for staff not to go down a rabbit hole to start, keep looking for that doesn't apply. When it doesn't apply, we refer back to wherever the base code allows, or, or what have you. But my point is, is that, I'm trying to remember what my point is, I apologize, because I went down the wrong rabbit hole again.
And does that get to my precedent comment, where we have to decide which, we have codes, and the codes should apply? And you're saying where, where the new laws, SB 6, AB 2011, and SP 2243 are silent, our laws speak already, or if we're missing something, then we should propose them and get them put into the municipal code, not necessarily in this design review process?
Correct. And those provisions are applied to, I'll let Sarah account for it, because she looks like she's ready to do so.
So if I could just add that on packet page 143, it does talk about the relationship between SB 6 and SB 35, or as amended, SB 423. So those provisions of SB 35 slash 423, those timeframes would be applicable and override the SB 6.
Page 143, you said?
Yeah, it's a little, it's under B2, under eligibility, ineligible. The reference of government code 65913.4 is SB, SB 35.
Okay. I'll make sure Jim sees it and takes a look.
Yeah, and my, my point was, is when I mentioned that Sarah had created these great guidelines for us to use and for the public to use, we could add that information in there as well as how they apply between the different state laws as best as possible. I mean, obviously, they're coming at us pretty quickly, but we could keep up to them.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to, wanted staff for all of the hard work. I saw in our briefing yesterday how excited you were, but also just to, to work through this exercise to the planning commission. I think this is, I liked what Commissioner Dalton had to say, where, you know, these standards are going to keep coming at us, they can, these are waivable, as Bob said. There's going to come a time, I think this is where AI kind of backs us up, as we can start to fill our ordinances in and as things start to come up, we're going to be able to find locks at some point. The state can't keep doing this without putting themselves in their own bind, right? It's the oraboreals, the snake eating its own tail. At some point, they're going to start eating their own tail. They can't have all of this without some kind of issue somewhere along the line. And it's our job down here, I think they're making us better. I think this exercise is probably more important than anything, and I know this is only applying to SB 6 and AB 211. But as we get better at this and we start to figure out these objective standards that work, like Commissioner Dalton was saying, it puts people where we could say, we could start to offer people that are willing to work within the confines of what we're looking for, and we can approve those people for those locations faster, and they're going to start to see the benefits in years, could be cut off of their, their process, even though they're trying to cut that process shorter and shorter. So at some point, I just, again, I think this, more importantly, into the exercise of where we're going in the next couple of years, and as we repeat this into either our spectral or general plan, we're going to see the value of all of us starting to understand and how we can almost find a stop to the state's overreach and where we can find ways to where we can, again, add a boy, add a girl to the developers that are doing it right, bring them closer to the fold and get those types of projects, and start to drive our own development and how we want to organize our city, and then years and decades ahead. So I thank everybody in this group, and then again, the staff and Matt for your diligence and creativity in this, even though, again, there's still stuff to go back after. I think where we get to the impenetrable waivers is probably going to be on the safety side. If I was just, if, 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 all the things I know about government and federal government, you know, all that stuff, it's always, if you want to, if you want to draw it back to the one thing that you cannot go past, it's safety. So if you want to find something that you can connect safety to, it will forever always be the, the stop. And I will say the last thing is, at some point, there will be a lawsuit that these bills tumble, like SB 79 in LA right now. It will start to have an effect where cities are going to start to see, and the big cities, in this case LA, going against the juggernaut called our state. And so that's going to start to happen, and as that starts to happen, there's going to be windows of opportunity, and there might be rollback. So these plans are important to have in place for that opportunity rollback when that happens, because it's not a matter of if. It will roll back at some point, because people will be fed up, or cities, so thank you.
So, so I think you're just looking for direction tonight, you got a lot of discussion. I wanted to hit, I heard some great ideas all across the board here, and I'm just going to hit a couple, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. The proportional benefits based on unit count, I thought that's key, that, that's a fundamental fix. There are others, too. I'd like to see, and I didn't mention it, special objectives for buildings that exceed four or five-plus stories. So kind of proportional to unit count, we ought to have something kick in when you hit four stories, something more kicks in when you hit five stories, and see if we can make them waiver impervious. Permeable, permeable, permeable space, surfaces, I can't speak. Open space, I really appreciated Deputy Mayor Lyons' comment about 25 feet excluding walking paths like Delmar does. And the other thing I really liked was the open space versus outside space. This is something, I've always had heartburn, that we consider a, a concrete, third-floor balcony, open space. I think I would love to see us define outside space and open space, and right now, I know in the current, we allow a combination of the two for 300 feet, but then we have a requirement for 100 feet of one type and 200 of another. I'm confused by that. I, I think the distinction of outside space versus open space, common open space, would be a really, really good thing to add. And Bob, you hit on the substantially altered projects, and I don't know that this is not a design review, but this is something that, as we go forward, we need to, as we work on the clock, because it does have to do with SB 6 timing, SB 35, kind of right along with Jim. So adding to Jim's question, I would add Bob's point about, once a project comes in substantially altered, it needs to reset that clock. And so if we, if that means we reject it and make them go back through the front door again, then let's start doing that. And, and that's outside of tonight. And adding the objective, Steve, you've mentioned adding objectives for streetscape and sidewalk. I agree. This was, this, right now, this is all objective standards about the building, and I think we need to get more into the streetscape, because quite frankly, along El Camino Real, that's what we've been talking about more. So if there's more we can add in there that would describe street trees and width of sidewalk and separate bike lane or whatever, you know, whatever we might be able to get in there, I would, I would add that. So just, but good work, and I think that concludes my, my comments. Any other comments? Any other comments from, you guys just want to go home? Okay. With that, I think we've reported out, we've done everything. We are adjourned.
Only a licensed fire sprinkler contractor holding a C-16 license can perform work on a fire sprinkler system. The fire riser box contains a pressure gauge, letting you know how much pressure is on the...